Thank you. Thank you everyone, I hope you had just the time to go to the bathroom and come back, you'll get some rest later. We'll start this new batch of presentation with a student presentation from Estela Grau. Welcome Estella. And she will talk to us about shark nursery in the island of Saint Martin. Estella, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. And thanks for everyone to coming to my presentation on the identification and characterization of a potential shark nursery area on the island of Saint Martin, Dutch side. I'm gonna be following a standard table of content. And I know that most of you are familiar with the Caribbean, but in case that some of you are not as familiar with the northeastern Caribbean, this is where Saint Martin is, right on the north of it. Saint Martin is in a very particular situation because half of the island belongs to the French and the other half of it belongs to the Dutch side. It's not as easy or simple as that because the Dutch part is a constituent country of the Kingdom of the Netherlands without being actually part of the kingdom, a part of the country of the Netherlands, which leaves us in a very beautiful gap for funding because we are not really part of the European Union, but kind of. So I wanted to highlight that there was very limited funding opportunities and that there's no baseline data, which is a problem that I see that a lot of my fellows from the Caribbean have had. So I apologize in advance for this kind of content. I could just go on and on about the world threats that all the sharks are facing, about habitat fragmentation and coastal development, but I think these are more direct threats that we are facing, at least on the Dutch Caribbean islands. This is unfortunately happened very recently and it happened in the Dutch Caribbean, luckily hasn't happened, doesn't happen very often. However, it is one of the direct threats that we are having and I just wanted to highlight the need of protection that these species have. And I wanted to show that that is a baby shark. So we wanted to identify shark nursery area. A shark nursery area is typically an area that provides with protection for sharks and also with full availability for them. And therefore, we wanted, it is a critical area for the protection and conservation of these species. And we wanted to focus on multi-species shark nursery because previous studies have shown that lots of different shark species have the same habitat requirements in terms of geographical ranges and diets. And therefore, we wanted to understand the role of Dutch Saint Martin waters as a shark nursery area for commonly encountered species, which in our case is nurse shark, Caribbean reef shark and tiger shark. To that end, what we did is we started summarizing all the different criteria that we have for be able to declaring a shark nursery area, which is size segregation, that's the literature review, higher number of juveniles present in the area, site fidelity for extended periods of time, skew sex ratio with a higher amount of females than males, the areas repeatedly used across years, and evidences of parturition. To that end, what we did is we did, we used a comprehensive approach that included empirical data, recorded anecdotal data and non-recorded anecdotal data. So the empirical data was comprised by citizen science network that we established and satellite telemetry data. We also obtained recorded anecdotal data through previous research and expeditions and non-recorded anecdotal data through basically local ecological knowledge gathered through interviews from shark experts of the area and divers. So bear with me, there's gonna be three different data sets: citizen science data, satellite telemetry data and anecdotal data. For the sake of the audience, because it's a lot easier to follow, what we're gonna do is I'll be explaining a little bit of the methodology and the results for each data set and at the end I'll cross-check it with the criteria that these results are meeting. So let's start with the citizen science data. We have 27 different dive sites on Saint Martin with very different conditions, which give us a very representative study area. And it is important to know that only nurse sharks and Caribbean reef sharks can be seen through diving observations, tiger sharks are extremely rare in this area of sort of diving. Therefore, we gave this observation sheet to every different dive center. It was usually weatherproof to make it easier to be able to fill out when they were coming back from the boat, since they're already pretty overworked. And it was very easy to fill, as you can see, it's basically check boxes. We have basic information such as dates, time, dive duration and the most common locations. And then also the number of sharks, the shark species sizes determined by life stages determined by size and also the certainty of the sighting. We obtained at the end 245 shark observations in 14 different locations. It is important to notice that there is a very wide range like differences between the number of dives per location. This is obviously because if you have a dive center, you're not gonna bring your divers to areas that are not biological hotspots because you want them to see something. So we corrected by effort doing observations per dive, so all the analysis has been conducted per dive. And at the end, we obtained 214 Caribbean reef shark observations and 31 nurse sharks, which we decided after some analysis that we didn't have enough data for nurse sharks and we took it out of this study. We did some analysis and we saw that there was a higher significantly amount of juveniles in comparison to any other life stages and this was coherent across all the different data sets that we had enough data for. We also wanted to do a sex ratio test because there's, as the box book can show, there's obviously a higher amount of females than males. However, this was not coherent, this was happening in adults. And therefore, we decided that it was probably because divers observations was not the best methodology to be able to do sex determination in juvenile sharks, since the class were not fully developed yet. Therefore, with the citizen science, we met two criteria for the Caribbean reef sharks, which are size segregation and higher number of juveniles present in the area. We continue with shark telemetry data set. We used a total of nine satellite tags that we had placed in 2016 and 2021. And as you can see, unfortunately, with the number of days, most of them didn't perform as we expected and therefore, so sorry. And therefore, we had to remove them from the analysis. However, there was one beautiful female tiger shark that was pregnant and it was known to be on the last stages of its pregnancy, that it stayed for six months on Saint Martin waters, showing evidences of parturition since it likely gave birth on Saint Martin waters. And therefore, the criteria that we met were site fidelity for extended periods of time and evidence of parturition for tiger sharks. With the anecdotal data sets, what we did is, I know that it's not very common to hear anecdotal on science, however, obviously if we just had anecdotal data, this wouldn't be very robust. However, in this case, we thought it gave us a very valuable insight because it gave us historical context, which we could have not obtained through research because there were not research that we could have used for this project previously. And therefore, we used local ecological knowledge, which we interviewed shark research of the expert, shark research, expert shark researchers of the area, such as Tati Verbois, that I know is very well-known on this conference, and also Leslie Hickerson, the manager of Nature Foundation. And then we also gathered some information through divers that had also a lot of experience on the area. We also used previous research conducted on the island, they had very different research calls. This doesn't have any fancy stereograph measurements, however, I think we can all agree that this is not an adult tiger shark, it's mostly likely a young of the year, or juvenile, mostly young of the year tiger shark. And we have so much footage like this, it's a pity. And then we also use morphometric data from previous shark tagging expeditions, such as sex ratio tests. So we gathered all the different data from the shark tagging expeditions that we got from tiger sharks mostly, and we saw that there was a very high amount, like favorable, significantly favorable amount of females in comparison to males. Therefore, with the anecdotal data, what we met were the criteria of size segregation for tiger sharks, the criteria of skew sex ratio with higher amount of females than males for tiger sharks as well, and the evidences of parturition for tiger sharks and Caribbean reef sharks. Therefore, if we cross-check all the different data sets with all the different criteria, we see that actually, most of them, if not almost all of them, are being met, not always by both species. And that the only criteria that is not being met by any is that the areas are purely used across years because of the lack of baseline data. But we're hoping that future projects will address this. So as a conclusion, there's a clear evidence for the first multi-species shark nursery area for Caribbean reef sharks and tiger sharks in the northeastern Caribbean Sea. And this shows the crucial role of Saint Martin waters in preserving shark populations on a regional basis. Thank you very much, welcome any questions.
Thank you very much Estella. Unfortunately, we won't have time for questions right now. But feel free to get in touch with her at the coffee break to ask all the questions I'm sure you have for her. Thank you very much Estella. Our next presenter is Rita Celayares Blasco from Dominican Republic and she will talk to us about one species that we haven't talked about so far, the manatee.
Yeah, I'm gonna say hello. So it's a pleasure to be here. I'm Rita Celayares from the Dominican Republic and I'm gonna talk about the greater Caribbean manatee. It's been a long time until we were able to achieve this national census to see the status of the population of the Antiguan manatee. As you know, it's an endangered species, we have this since 2008, but in the D R in 2011, it was declared as critical endangered marine mammal. It's the only species under this category in the country. But when we look to the data and the studies done in the country, most of them, they are unpublished, but we have several good references from Belitsky and Belitsky, that was on a study done, a national census done in 1975. And also the amazing work that Ayde Dominguez Tejo did, that she did a recopulation of information of sightings and reports of manatees from pre-Columbian time until 2013. So with this information, we saw that we had several gaps in the country and due to the similar methodologies and that not all the efforts were in a national level, we were not able to compare the data, so we didn't know how many manatees we had left in the country. So we knew that there were a few, we had some reports, we had information from strandings, but we didn't know really what was the situation. So in 2020, an amazing project happened, it was a collaborative effort between the Ministry of Environment, Fund de Mar, National Aquarium, and we did the first reintroduction of three manatees into the wild, Pepe, Juanita and Lubita. When we did this project, when we did this project, we didn't thought that it was gonna be that amazing. So the three animals were kept in a bay for six months so they could adapt to the wild. And when we opened the doors, they start to move around the coast, because they've been in captivity, some of them for eight years, they were too social. So we didn't want that, but they created a relationship with the people and the country. So all the Dominicans started to be engaged to the Antiguan manatee and they start to claim that we need to know what's the status of conservation and we needed to protect the species. So this was a push to get the funding to the national census. So we were able to do it using two technologies, the drone surveys and the aerial surveys. Each one, it has advantages and disadvantages. With aerial surveys, it was complicated at the beginning to do it because to get a plane for the D R that had the safety conditions that we needed. It was expensive because it was all the money in once. So we started with the drone surveys. But then, after one year, we were able to bring the plane to the site. So with the drone surveys, we were able to take a lot of information. We were flying all the Dominican coast, it took us 36 days, a lot of flying hours and when you see, we're doing transits from shore to 300 meters deep. So when we see a manatee, the drone stays and another drone goes and stays with the manatee and the other one keeps looking for the manatee, so doing the transits. So with that, we were able to check on behavior, habitat use, relationship, and we start a tiny pilot project to try to photo ID the animals. And also during this process, we had a lot of engagement of the community, because in each site, we were working with the community. So this strengthened the national network of strandings. So now when we have a stranding, we get more information. With aerial surveys, it's fast, it's easy, but it's also complicated to the plane and that you need to be really an expert to see the manatees from the plane. So with three days, we were able to also fly all the coast, it was, we were looking from shore to 500 meters deep, far from the shore, like 500 meter. And we were able to get a prediction model and also to estimate the abundance of manatees in the country. So I'm gonna focus a little bit on the aerial surveys, but then I'm gonna compare the data. So to fit the model that is gonna give us the estimated abundance, we had to do, had to put the information of the sightings from the plane, then we put all the layers of habitat that we thought it was important for manatee observation, like presence of mangroves, presence of seagrass, freshwater, distance to the coast, etc. Then with this mix of the habitat and the sightings, we were able to predict where it's more probable to see manatees. And then with this information and other variables, we were able to estimate the abundance of manatees. So during the flight, you can see the patterns of flights, like each color each one day. We were able to see 28 sightings in these three days. At the groups that we were seeing, it was between one to four animals per sighting and we saw a total of 47 individuals, 42 for sure and then the other ones that with medium and low confidence. And an interesting point of it is that 90% of the sightings were in NPAs. Then, when we overlap these sightings with the habitat maps, we could have like each kilometer square of the map to know the estimated abundance, the probability of seeing a manatee in this square. So with this information, we were able to have the predictive model and we established several hotspots for the country where the main populations remain. And we saw that mangroves, seagrass and freshwater were a strong predictors for manatee observation. The estimated abundance that we were able to estimate, it was 110 manatees. And it's not that much, but it's still a good population if we compare it with the Caribbean situation. So we still have hope for the species in the country. But an interesting part of it is when we compare this with the aerial surveys from 1975, that is when it was done the study by Belitsky and Belitsky, and we also compare with the data that we obtained with the drones, we can see that the hotspots, they are the same. And this makes think that, this is an important thing to observe because if you see the Dominican Republic, you see that the hotspots, they are kind of isolated, so probably we don't have connectivity among populations. So this may be that we have a low genetic population. So it's something that we need to look at it. And then, another interesting thing, and I think this is a good thing, if we compare to the observations from the 75 and observations from the aerial surveys from last year, we can see that we have more or less the same amount of animals. We cannot compare methodologies because they were different, but if we see the numbers, they are pretty the same. So we think that the population probably it's stable, it's low, but it's been a stable. Then, during the drone surveys, we were able to get engaged with the communities, as I was saying, and also see a lot of the threats that the manatees were facing. So we have a population that looks like it's a stable, but it's a number, a reduced number of animal, it's just 110, so we need to take care about several threats. One of them is the strandings. So we have seen that in the, we've been following up the database of a stranding since 1995, so we have seen that in the last 10 years, the number of strandings increased. But probably, it's because we have more information. Now there is more awareness, so people is reporting the strandings. But then, when we look to the cause of death of the stranding, we can see that in the 70% of the times, we don't know the cause. So it means that no necropsis and no evacuation was done before. So it's something that we are improving, because if we want to protect the species, we need to know why they are dying. And another thing that we saw is that there are several active threats, being the main ones boat, accidents with boat and active fishing. So it's something that we are paying attention to. So now, okay. So now we are working in the first national action plan for the species protection, it's a 10-year action plan, it's a collaborative, collaborative effort among Ministry of Environment, National Aquarium and the different NGOs, well, the people that work with us in the country, they know that we work really together, the institutions in the D R. And in this plan, we hope to put all the steps that we need to follow to protect the species and hopefully to increase the number of animals in the country. Then we are working with, to strengthen the stranding network into things, to get more reports, but also to have a better first response of action, because sometimes animals die because you don't have the local capacity to have this first response to give to the animal. And also, we need to make sure that each animal that dies, we need to know the cause or at least do the necropsis. And in the hotspots, we are doing a project in a national level also of photo identification of each animal. This is complicated with manatees, our manatees at least, because they don't have any marks or anything, so we took the pictures, we analyze it by eye and then we compare. We already identified 40 animals, so it's almost like 35% of the estimated population. And I think that with this information also, we are gonna be able to see if one animal moved from one hotspot to the other, also to identify it. We're also collaborating in a regional effort with Dr. Mari Alvarez and we provided several samples of the manatee tissue to collaborate in the genetic studies. One interesting thing is that they already seen five genetic variants for the Dominican Republic, two more than the ones, the study presented by Viana in 2006, so this is interesting. And also, a really important thing that they have seen is that we found allotypes J and E belonging to Colombia and Central America respectively. So this suggests a potential biological corridor from Central America to Española via Jamaica. So this highlights again the importance of working in a regional level and these are spaces where we can share the information and do some agreements to collaborate. So I'm gonna finish with that and I wanna thank all the team that make this possible because there is a lot of voluntary effort behind this and also, of course, our manatees. Okay, thank you.
Muchas gracias Rita. Again, we should have time for questions at the end of the session, otherwise feel free to get in touch with Rita. Our next presenter is Rocío Prieto González and she will talk to us about humpback whales connectivity in the last century.
Hello? Could you hear me? Like this is okay? Okay. I'm Rocío Prieto González from Counting Ways and I'm gonna present the insights from Megara project. So it's a project carried out by a bunch of people and all authors would like to dedicate this presentation to Michael Villem. So we are gonna talking about transboundary connectivity, these girls are normanatees. The project's name, Megara, stands by Megaptera reproduction area. And that's because it takes place in the Anguilla Bank, stand from the north of Anguilla to the south of San Bartelimi. And the site size and his batimetry between 20 and 70 meters depth make it a fantastic spot for breeding, for humpback whales breeding. So the goals of the project were to tracking the migration of humpback whales and understanding their movements in relations to political boundaries, marine protected areas and sanctuaries, more or less where we were talking. Here are some numbers, more than 100 humpback whales observed, 430 acoustic recordings, photo ID leading to 14 new individuals and three international matches, 25 biopsies and 50 satellite tracking tags deployed in collaboration with the Teria Network and the Greenland Institute. So here in this presentation, we are gonna focus on the analysis of this telemetry data from two different missions, one in 2014 and 2019. So 2014, it was at the end of March, beginning of April, 12 days, more than 1,500 kilometers survey effort and they tagged eight individuals. In 2019, it was at the end of March, a little bit less of effort and six individuals were tagged. All this results in very interesting interinlab movements, that is where we are gonna focus. So that's how my tracks look like. As you can see, I told that there were like 15 deployment tags, but I'm just showing 13 because two of them never worked and whale number zero, just for a few hours, so we are ignoring it. The mean direction was 20 days with a maximum of 45-ish, 46. And of course, we put some names to the whales, so they look nicer, and I'm gonna present some of the main characters. Sorry, if we look here, we don't see much more what is going on in the Caribbean area, so I'm zooming in. And in 2014, we have Sokka, that he was a man with a calf. We have Teria 5, we have Megara, another man with a five, and four, five and six, these didn't even have a name because they admitted very few, less than two days. Are still in the analysis, but the quality is the quality of the data, I cannot do anything about that. 2019, we have Michael, that is kind of the purple, the, oops, longest one. We have Nagiko, a very good one in green, sorry. We have Melody and Luna, who both were whales with calves. And we have Casper, and Casper is funny, it's gonna help me to introduce the next step, because he made like a couple of GPS positions, then we have nothing for six days, I was generous, it was more than a week. And then he starts with us meeting. So basically, that is a very clear example of we have some errors associated with the telemetry data. And depending on the number of satellites and everything, we have to clear this data before we can run any kind of analysis. So we can point as well that there is this weird dots. And I say weird because they are kind of far away, so if you check the timing, it's impossible that a whale can travel that fast, they are not that fast, in this interval of time. So we need to deal as well with this analysis. So basically, we are interested in modeling these trajectories and we are gonna use a hidden mark of model. The motivation for a hidden mark of model is different behaviors still give rise to different movement patterns. So we tried to model animal movement patterns arising from different behavioral states. And the steps to do this are processing the data, that is what is called filtering. Then we will fit this hidden mark of model to answer ecological questions and we can even add covarias to explain this behavior. And you may be wondering like, why if my goal is to fit a hidden mark of model, do I need that previous step to filter the data? And you are gonna bear with me for slides, I promise, I will be back to my tracks, but I'm gonna explain you why. I didn't have an idea four months ago, so I'm assuming you have no idea. How we fit a hidden mark of model? I can show you here a simpler random walk and a correlated random walk. And our tracks look very much alike, that a correlated random walk. So basically, in a hidden mark of model, in a correlated random walk includes persistence and direction. And we can model this through our locations. So we have GPS location that is gonna give us step length and turning angles. We can assume a distribution for the step lengths and turning angles and it's gonna give us a measure. And it's going to give us a measure of the speed and a measure of the direction. So here is our observation, our points with our step length and turning angles. And behind is the state process, which is hidden and is what we want to predict. And I go with an example because it's much more easy. Imagine we have a model with two states, foraging and exploring. Foraging in red, exploring in blue. And the foraging distribution, showing red, have very short steps and wide turning angle. It's like a home range movement. The whale is moving around in a constrained area. And in contrast, the exploring and traveling distribution, I say traveling because it's more related in that in our case, showing blue has much longer step and a much more direct, consistent direction. So this two distribution is going to help us establish. The model is going to group the data in different behaviors depending on the similarities of how they move. Not that easy. Still, we have more and more step. This is what we have. This is what we want to have. And what happened is like hidden mark of model requires two assumptions. Measure measure should be available. There is not much we can do about that. And location should be observed at regular time intervals. This is something we need to fix because otherwise we cannot fit a hidden mark of model. So a partial solution is to model this with a state space model first before applying the hidden mark of model. So we are going to have these regular tracks over the time. But maybe you are wondering like, yeah, there are some places like here that is easy because I have plenty of location. I know my whale was there. But some places where there is a gap of maybe two days even, where I have no idea where the whale is. So that creates problems. But the good point is like we can use multiple imputation and basically it's going to take into account the lack of information that we have when the whale just disappear. Of course, she's breeding during two days. She breathes, but we don't get the signal of the GPS. So of course, we have no idea where she is. So this multiple imputation give us a measure of uncertainty in the area where we don't have this GPS location. That's fantastic because basically this is the first step that we need to regularize the track before fitting the hidden marker model. And we are using crawl package that is including momentum and can use this multiple imputation. So my results. Back to me, I hope I didn't lose you very much. This is my tracks. This is how they look like when they were filtered. First stage, just accounting for error parameters, duplicate locations, putting a maximum speed limit and times between locations. We are deleting tracks that are longer than a week WAP and shorter as well than just one day. If we have two GPS positions, it's like, not worth it. And after all these, there we go. We have our beautiful boats that are like very regular tracks and then we can fit our hidden mark of model. So Megara, as you can see, there is the red dogs, tack tack tack, regular. And the black ones have the observation that we have. So these are already predictions that we are fitting to the model. Here are the results. We have two states, one in yellow, one in blue. And they look very much alike that example I saw you. So I'm not entering this because take home measures, the including uncertainties coming next. And what I want to point is the strong connectivity that there is between the waters of the North Lesser Antillas and the Great Antillas. Forget about Bermuda. Basically, there are two main migration routes for humpback whales. One goes from northwest Atlantic to North America, passing by Bermuda, as exactly, sorry, I should point you this slide first. Sokka did it. So she went from Antigua Bank to British Biggerland. He arrived to Republic Dominic and then he go north, passing by Barbuda. But basically, what we found, and I was curious, is that during that time, humpback whales traveling back and forward between the Caribbean arc and they stay in average like 20, 30 days moving around. So it seems that whales use the Antigua Bank, the Sabah Bank and the Barbuda Salles to prepare their calves before the long migrations. And both of these show that they have like completely a strong, strong connectivity. So basically, more that, finishing already, more that everyone is saying so far, the take home message is, to sum up, this study highlights the importance of regional cooperation for large transboundary marine sanctuaries and corridor. And this wouldn't be possible without joint conservation effort between sanctuaries, NPA and all of us in the Caribbean. So that's it. Thank you. No time for questions, but you can please come and talk to me whenever.
Thank you, Rocío. Our next presenter is Jaime Boláñez Jiménez and he will talk about cetaceans in Venezuelan waters over the last 50 years.
Hi, good morning. Thank you, Jerome. Well, I am here as the coordinator of the Caribbean Wide Orca Project, a collaborative informal initiative to produce reviews and modeling of the distributions of marine mammals in the wider Caribbean region. In this occasion, I will present this review of the strandings and incidents involving cetaceans in Venezuelan waters. This is a collaborative project that includes the participation of colleagues from the government, from the academia and from the non-governmental sector. What, why are important marine mammal strandings? They are important because they help us get data and information on natural history, disease, threats and taxonomy, among other topics. The origin of this project was back in 99 when, as a former officer of the Profauna, the Venezuelan Fish and Wildlife Service, I compiled the first database of marine mammal strandings in Venezuela at that time with 122 records. Then, for this symposium in 2012, we joined efforts with Clemente, Luis and Leonardo and we collected 368 records. And then, in 2014, for presentation at the Scientific Committee of the International Whaling Commission, we joined the fourth with other colleagues and labs. So we collected, at that moment, 624 records. Well, what is our study area? Our study area is the Venezuelan EEC waters. And here it is important to mention that earlier this year, at the workshop of the IUCN tasked for important marine mammal areas in Mexico, participated with other colleagues from Venezuela and others in this room, we proposed the Southern Caribbean Abwelling System as an important marine mammal area. And we recently received a response that it was accepted. So here, inside this area, we have, we have number one for Venezuela. Two, we have two very important fishing grounds in the Southern Caribbean. Number one is the Gulf of Venezuela and number two is the northeastern Venezuelan basin. That are important not just as fishing grounds, but also as habitat for marine mammals. As a result, we have, at this moment, we have, we count on 707 records and 91% are of dead animals and 89% are of single individuals. Regarding species, we have documented 25 species. That is more than 80% of the cetacean inventory of the Caribbean, of which four Odontoseds account for the majority of records, including, including the common dolphin, the Guyana dolphin, the boreal-nosed dolphin and the Atlantic spotted dolphin. In more than 70% of the cases, it was not possible to get information on the probable cause of death or standing of the animal, but we could document fishing interactions in 12% of the cases. Disease, 7%, direct hunts, 4%. Collision with boat, 3%. Predation, 2%. Unusual mortality events, 0.3%. Now, we will have, we will present several special cases of the distribution of strandings. In some cases, we have not the coordinates available. So by that reason, we use those wide square with numbers. Here, this is the most common species in Venezuelan water, is the bright whale. We have 24 cases. We have one case of the Antarctic minke whale and three records of the fin whale. These are migratory species. And we have this interesting case. We have six records of the humpback whale. And this one was in October 1994. The time is consistent with the migratory pattern of humpbacks from the southern hemisphere. The common boreal-nosed dolphin is common along the coast, same as the Atlantic spotted dolphin. And here we have a stranding in Aveys Island, just about two kilometers western from where we are now. Two records of the killer whale, one stranding in 1993 and one stranding last year. That is the type of year, in August 2023. Seven killer whales stranded in Chacopata, northeast Venezuela. And they were immediately released by fishers, National Guard and fisheries officers. And note about this has just been accepted at the J M B A journal. This is another special case, another special species. It is the Guyana dolphin. Venezuela is a special habitat for this species because we have it in the Maracaibo Lake that is storing the Gulf of Venezuela all along the Venezuelan coast and inside the Orinoco River. For the dwarf sperm whale, we have 11 records. So far, we have not confirmed records of the pygmy sperm whale. And for the pink river dolphin, we have only 14 records. It is with no doubt and underestimation. But not, strandings usually don't come to our knowledge. And this for the rest of the species that we have no time to describe. In conclusion, current numbers are subestimation. The species most represented are the common dolphin, the Guyana dolphin, the boreal-nosed dolphin and the Atlantic spotted dolphin. And the misty-settled whale most represented is the bright whale. And those like look as stranding hotspots in the Gulf of Venezuela and Margarita, Cochi and Cubago Islands are more related to increased stranding response and research effort. No picture? Not, not the final picture? Okay, so that's all? I had a picture here. Okay, here it is. Here it is. Yeah, yeah. The takeaway message here is that collaboration is not important just for releasing alive killer whales. As it has been mentioned earlier this morning and the previous days, it's important also to increase the quality and reach of scientific research and conservation aims. Thank you very much. No time for questions.
Muchas gracias. No, unfortunately not. Sorry, Jaime. Thank you very much, Jaime. Bear with us. We have two more presentations before coffee break. And the next one is going to be presented by Ocean Beaufort. She's from Guadalupe and she will talk about how to involve scuba divers in shark sightings.
So, good morning, everyone. I'm Ocean Beaufort. I work for Cap Naturele NGO on sharks and whale in all the French West Indies. Today, it's a pleasure to present you the first result about the spotted eagle whale obtained with the Inascoba Protocol. So, the spotted eagle whale, it's a coastal species found exclusively in the Atlantic Ocean. It moves near the bottom especially for feeding. This characteristic make it particularly vulnerable to certain threats such as gill nets and coastal degradation and pollution. Due to a significant population decline over the past 30 years, the spotted eagle whale has been added to the red list with an unencouraged status. So we need to act. We need to act now and we need to try to reduce human threats on these species. So we have a lot of question and to try to answer of some of them, we need to have data. How to get data quickly? Who are the main actors who can observe them? Divers, of course. They are distributed across all the French West Indies. They regularly dive on the same sites and they dive almost all year round. The Inascoba Protocol was created initially for monitoring sea total in Guadalupe. It's based on the following principle. When a species is abundant on the dive sites, the more diver can sight it. In this study, we will use the way sightings are as a proxy for whale population because, as you know, it seems very complicated to count the real number of whale when we dive. For that, participating clubs are trained in protocol and species identification. On each dive, the trained instructor provide a lot of information. For this first analysis, we use data from daytime dives conducted between 2019 and 2023. Here, we have the four territories of the French West Indies. And we are here, actually. In total, for this first analysis, we use 12,800 dives. So for the first result, we will use the encounter rate, which is the number of dives where at least one whale was sighted divided by the total of number of dives. For the French West Indies, it seems that we have some differences between territories. In San Bartelimi, the species is common with 32%. In Guadalupe and in Martinique, the spotted eagle whale is a rare species. So we have difference, differences between the island and territories. We can also see if there is any differences between the same territories. For example, for Guadalupe and Ashipelago, we have two sectors where the species is common. And in all the other sectors, the species is rare. So yes, there is differences between sectors on the same territories. Now the question, how can we explain all these differences that you can see on islands, territories and sectors? We know that there is a lot of factors who can influence sightings of whale. There is physico-chemical factors. There is biological factors, but also ecological factors and of course, human factors. For this first study, so this first analysis, we use four factors. The sector, the moon, using the lunar day. The sector, the moon using the lunar day, the quarters and fishing pressure using the gill net occurrence. A negative binomial regression model was used with this factor and the data available. For the first factor, sector. So, we can see there is differences between sectors. Sightings are more common in San Bartelemi and in Gran Cutsac Maran in Guadalupe. There are major differences in whale sightings depending on the sector. For example, between San Bartelemi and Nor Gran Terre, NGT, in Guadalupe, the sightings decrease with an estimated about sixty-eight percent. Another example, between San Bartelemi and Sud Caraíbe in Martinique, the decrease is estimated at ninety-two percent. So, yes, there are significant differences in eagle whale sightings between sectors in all the French West Indies. The second factor, quarters. We observe an increase of sightings since the first quarters and the last quarters. This increase is estimate about fifty-eight percent. So, yes, time of year has a significative effect on eagle whale sightings. For the lunar day factor, there is no significant difference in whale sightings based on the lunar day. So, in this study, the moon has no significant effect on the eagle whale sightings. And the last factors, gill net occurrence. We can see that there is a difference between presence and absence of gill net. There is less sighting in area where the gill net is present. And it's significant and the estimate is a decrease of fifty percent of sightings. So, yes, the presence of gill nets has a significant negative effect on the eagle whale sightings. In conclusion, in the French West Indies, there are differences in spotted eagle whale sightings depending on island, territories and sectors. Among all the factors today, sightings are more common in San Bartelemi and in Gran Cutsac Maran in Guadalupe. There is a seasonality in sightings with small sightings occur between October and December. There is no effect on the moon on sighting in this study. And sightings are more common in area without gill nets. We plan to make a new analysis with additional factors to improve this model. And I would like to remind that this work was possible thanks to the considerable effort of diving clubs. Participatory science has its limit, but it's like any methods. And but as long as these limits are taken into consideration, the data obtained can provide valuable insights. I would like to thank you and to extend my gratitude to all the diving club who are involved in this survey. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ocean. We'll move on to the last presentation of this session. It's a presentation from Dorka Angelista Pérez. Dorka is not with us, she's online, she has a recorded presentation, so we will display the presentation. And since she's not with us and you won't have the opportunity to interact with her, we will allow for one or two questions before coffee break.
... quiero presentarles los resultados de la expedición científica La Cordillera Beata para el establecimiento de esta nueva área marina protegida binacional entre República Dominicana y Colombia. Antes que nada, quiero introducirlo a qué es la Cordillera Beata. La Cordillera Beata es una formación geológica submarina compuesta principalmente por montes submarinos que se extienden desde el sur oeste de la República Dominicana hasta las aguas colombianas con profundidades entre los novecientos y más de cuatro mil doscientos metros de profundidad. El antecedente principal de esta expedición científica es la COP quince en el año dos mil veintidós, donde las partes propusieron proteger el treinta por ciento de las tierras y los océanos y mares del planeta. De esta COP surge la iniciativa Treinta por Treinta en la República Dominicana. Y así, el veintiséis de julio de año dos mil veintidós, los gobiernos de República Dominicana y Colombia se reunieron para la firma y la declaratoria conjunta entre los gobiernos para la creación de un paisaje marino protegido en la ecozona de Beata. Claro, esto necesitaba un soporte científico por lo que se diseñó esta expedición para reunir todas las evidencias para la creación de esta nueva área marina protegida entre ambos países. Aquí podemos ver el diseño de la expedición, cuatro salidas en total. Esas son las pre-rutas diseñadas alrededor de la Cordillera Beata, sobre la Cordillera Beata también, desde la, desde Barahona en la República Dominicana hasta proximidades de los límites con las aguas del país de Colombia. Aquí podemos ver las salidas de la embarcación desde Guadalupe hasta República Dominicana, las diferentes salidas que se realizaron desde el veintisiete de enero hasta el catorce de febrero del año dos mil veinticuatro y luego el retorno de la embarcación hacia el Guadalupe. Las metodologías. Las metodologías utilizadas se tomaron del protocolo de Caribbean cetaceo serenity adaptado a esta expedición que incluía observación visual, monitoría acústico, identificación fotográfica, la utilización del sistema Brof y las tomas de muestra de ADN ambiental. Como resultado, tuvimos trescientos cincuenta y cinco horas de investigación, una distancia recorrida de dos mil setecientos cuarenta kilómetros, cuatrocientos nueve puntos de hidrófono, sesenta horas de escucha activa, treinta y uno muestras de ADN mental y treinta y un despliegue de el sistema Brof. Hallazgos. Pudimos identificar dos especies de tiburones, el tiburón sedoso, una especie migratoria, y el tiburón oceánico punta blanca que se encuentra en peligro de extinción. Los individuos identificados para estas especies eran juveniles, lo que sugiere que la Cordillera Beata es una zona de cría para tiburones. También obtuvimos la identificación de una especie por deducción gracias a las fotoidentificaciones que realizamos, que fue el tiburón cigarro, una especie de aguas profundas. Para cetaceos, de los cuatrocientos nueve puntos de escucha activa de hidrófono, tuvimos un total de setenta y nueve civatos de delfine y veintisiete clips de cachalotes. En total, pudimos identificar seis especies para cetaceos, la ballena piloto de leta corta, el cachalote, del fin manchado del Atlántico, del fin manchado tropical, la falsa horca y el del fin nariz de botella. En total, los individuos sumados para la ballena piloto fueron treinta y ocho, cachalote treinta y uno, del fin manchado del Atlántico ochenta y seis, del fin manchado tropical ciento cuarenta y seis y para la falsa horca, tres individuos. Para el del fin nariz de botella nos pudieron contabilizar los individuos, pero sí se pudo registrar su presencia. Para las aves marinas, tuvimos un total de dieciocho especies identificadas, trescientos treinta avistamientos. Pudimos avistar los dos morfotipos de el diablo ting que habitan en Hispaniola, en República Dominicana y en Haití. Y las aves marinas pudieron verse observada en vuelo, en descanso y alimentados. El diablo ting fue la especie de aves marina más observada, con ochenta observaciones en total y ciento uno individuos contabilizados y registrados. Y aunque la determinación de los fenotipos no era parte del diseño de la expedición y del protocolo, las imágenes recorridas han proporcionado pruebas del uso de ambos morfotipos de la Cordillera Beata. Para los resultados de ADN mental de las treinta y uno muestras realizadas, se identificó un total de cuatrocientos sesenta y tres morfotipos de especies. De las veinte muestras utilizadas para mamíferos, diez dieron resultado positivo para el del fin moteado epantropicales en el Ademoto. De las veintiuno muestras utilizadas para peces, dieciséis resultaron positivas, destacando la presencia de especies como el pez interna, el pez interna... el pez medio pico falso, pez globooceánico y el pez cabrilla de leta marilla. Conclusiones. Dentro de las principales conclusiones de la expedición científica La Cordillera Beata está: la identificación de seis especies de cetaceos. Se confirma la relación para las entidades menores en el caso de los cachalotes de aquí registramos, el S dos, que es el clan vocal de cachalotes Fiseterma crucifalus. La presencia de juveniles en cuatro de las seis especies que identificamos para cetaceos sugiere que esta zona es una zona utilizada para cría. La falta de avistamiento de horcas puede atribuirse al esfuerzo limitado de muestreo y las condiciones climáticas adversas en alta mar. Y la morfología geológica sugiere también que la cordillera puede ser un centro para la actividad de la vida marina en el Caribe, trayendo especies migratorias como pudimos observar en los resultados para tiburones. Aunque no se visitaron ballenas forrobadas durante la expedición, hay informes de pescadores que sugieren que estas frecuentan la zona sur de la República Dominicana. Aunque se esperaba también la presencia de horcas, que ya han sido reportada para diferentes bases de datos, su baja tasa de encuentro también puede atribuirse al muestreo limitado y a la vasta zona que estábamos tratando de mostrar. Para aves, un dieciocho, dieciocho especies identificadas. La Cordillera Beata es una vida muy importante en cuanto a presencia de diablo ting a lo largo de toda la cordillera, ya que fue observado en vuelo, descanso y alimentándose. Dos especies de tiburones identificado y una especie deducida y cuatrocientos sesenta y tres morfotipos de especies identificados a través de estudios de ADN ambiental. En conclusión, estos hallazgos restaltan la necesidad de investigaciones adicionales para confirmar y comprender los factores que afectan los patrones de distribución y los tamaños de los grupos de cetaceos y otras especies marinas en la Cordillera Beata. Dentro de nuestros logros principales es la declaratoria de esta área marina protegida binacional por medio del decreto presidencial ciento noventa y cuatro guion veinticuatro, creando así el Santuario Marino Orlando Jorge Mira en la Cordillera Beata, una extensión de cincuenta y cuatro mil setecientos noventa y cinco kilómetros cuadrados. Y también otro logro muy importante para otra zona, también de gran importancia para la megafauna marítima, el santuario de mabefros marinos Banco de la Plata y la Navidad. Este se extendió de treinta y tres mil cuatrocientos tres punto veintisiete kilómetros a sesenta y cuatro mil quinientos setenta y ocho punto sesenta y cuatro kilómetros cuadrados. Un logro que posicionó a la República Dominicana como el primer país en el Caribe en lograr proteger el treinta por ciento de su territorio marino. Ahora vamos a ver la tripulación que con un esfuerzo conjunto también fue parte de este gran logro. Gracias a ellos pudimos obtener este logro, no solo para la República Dominicana, sino también para la región del Caribe. Y también agradecer a todos nuestros socios en la expedición, nuestros financiadores y líderes de la expedición, las organizaciones e instituciones nacionales y regionales que fueron parte también de esta meta para el Caribe. Ahora los dejo en nuestro espacio de preguntas, si tienen preguntas estoy disponible a responderlas y muchas gracias por su atención.
Thank you very much, Dorka. Can you hear us online? Are you there? Do we, do we have any question for Dorka in the room? Apparently not. Dorka, do you hear us well?
¿Me puedo escucharlos? ¿Me escuchan?
Yes, we can hear you. Do you have any question for Dorka or not? Was that just coffee break calling? I know it is. Okay, well, fair enough. Muchas gracias, Dorka, para su presentación. Thank you very much. And you, you gave us your contacts. So if people want to have more information, they can reach out directly to you. Thank you very much. So, we are right on time for coffee break, which I'm sure you're thrilled about. Just one thing before that, just to recall, because the room is clearly more full than it was at eight when I did this first call. But our fellows from the Bahamas did this amazing leaflet on cetaceans in the Bahamas. They are here for free for you to take away, so feel free to come down here and then ask them any questions you want to.
...
Alright guys, if you could take your seat please so that we don't take too much time to get started again. Ah, then it's an error, it's not Benjamin. Alright, please get, can you take your seats? We'll start again. So, the first presenter of this new session is Jake Levinson. And he will talk to us, guys, can you please? Can you please sit down? Jake has a very uncomfortable position. He has to be the first presentation after the break. So please be very nice to him. And Jake, I'll just leave the floor to you.
Thank you. Thanks for highlighting how uncomfortable it is to be after the coffee break. I have to admit that I have a pretty severe case of imposter syndrome whenever I have to give a presentation, but especially today. Not only do I not speak French or Spanish while watching you guys seamlessly somehow switch between all three, I barely speak English. I'm also not Marcella Harris, the lead author in this paper, in case you couldn't tell. Marcella was unable to attend and I'm here to present in her absence. And it's important to point out that this work is actually done by people in Dominica, many of whom put themselves in harm's way to protect these endangered species. I, in case you couldn't tell, obviously am not Dominican. I just like to help make good things happen. And I spend much of my time supporting Dominicans doing the hard work. I just happen to be lucky enough to share this incredible work with you all today. I also want to stress this is all preliminary data, but we didn't want to miss a chance to share our work at the session, literally just a stone's throw from Dominica. You can see it during our coffee breaks. So I probably don't need to point this out for this audience, but just to be safe, let's take a second to clarify the location we're talking about here. We're Dominica. We're Dominica, not the Dominican Republic. Whenever I tell friends and family that I helped do science in Dominica, inevitably the first reaction is, "Oh, my crew stopped in the DR," or "They have such a great, that's such a pretty place in the Dominican." And I'll roll my eyes, and so this is just something I'm just used to saying at this point. So, we're different countries, about 700 some miles south of Dominican Republic, but one you could see that we share many species across our boundaries. And this work is really carried out by the good folks that make up the Dominica Sea Turtle Conservation Organization and Oceans Forward Dominica. An organization we established together to basically serve as Dominica's ocean conservancy. And our mission is to drive innovative solutions for marine conservation that enable stewardship, create lasting results, and push the traditional boundaries to make the impossible a reality. No big deal, really. We have three major pillars to our work. We restore, we have a core restoration program and a core rescue center built in the southern part of Dominica. We support whale conservation through activities such as vessel monitoring systems using AIS and radar stations across Dominica, as well as various sensors such as passive acoustics and some remote sensing tools. And what I'm going to talk about today, our sea turtle conservation partnership with the Dominica Sea Turtle Conservation Organization. But there's really a fourth pillar, and you might laugh at this. Funding long-term conservation initiatives is, it's a real big challenge, and it's especially a big challenge in Dominica. After getting rejected by way too many grant applications, some of which, when they have the dropdown menu of what countries they are, I have to tell them that Dominica isn't on the list. But we've been rejected by way too many grant applications, so we decided to take things into our own hands. So to support this work, and take care of people too, we operate the world's only conservation distillery. That's right, we're in the final steps of construction, that's not a joke, if you're listening on the translation right now, your translator did not mess that up. It's funny to me personally because I don't even drink, but yet I found myself now having a distillery as well as doing science on all these cool stuff. So how does community-based monitoring work? In 2003, this project started to better understand and protect Dominica sea turtles across their habitat, understand their behavior, and their nesting trends. And that consists of community partnerships, about 35 individual patrollers patrol beaches nightly during nesting season, we have partnerships in about 24 communities, and so many volunteers, I've lost track. We work with the Dominica Forestry and Fisheries divisions to be both a deterrent to illegal hunting and collecting data on nesting animals. And we collect opportunistic sightings in partnerships with tour operators and fishermen as well. Now, 20 years ago, we started collecting data using paper records, and for much of the past 20 years, it was paper record peeping. That comes with all sorts of challenges, as you'll see in a second here. For the past two years, we've transitioned to an ArcGIS app, which has been a learning curve, but it enables rapid quality control and easier analysis. It also affords the opportunity for us to integrate with protected area management tools like EarthRanger, so we can have a single dashboard view in real time of patroller locations, tags, camera traps, or other monitoring tools. But really, a different set of challenges has emerged with the technical stuff than with paper. There's comfort with technology, and we still have all the usual challenges of fieldwork. We still have weather, rain, wind, nesting turtles throwing sand in your face, all that stuff. So, it's been a challenge. But what we've done is built, put all the data into a one giant relational database that consisted of 3,500 initial records. But because things were paper and all sorts of transcription errors and all sorts of problems, we started to systematically go through that data. We removed duplicate entries because people love to just make sure you've gotten the piece of paper multiple times. We removed incomplete entries where dates were missing or species were missing. For this case, we removed extreme temporal outliers outside of, way outside of traditional nesting seasons, morphometric outliers like a 50-meter-long leatherback turtle, and other sort of outliers in the process. And that left us with about 756 records. And so, there's some data that we're able to get from this. If you look at the number of confirmed nests per year by species, a confirmed nest is where someone physically sees an egg going into a nest chamber, coming out of a sea turtle. In 2003, with the years that are missing here, in 2015, 16 is data that was lost due to Hurricane Maria. I spent a lot of time after Maria going through wet and moldy paper forms, and unfortunately there was a lot that we weren't able to recover. But, but the point here is that you can see a decreasing trend over time despite an increasing observer effort. And the next step in this would be to standardize this per-unit effort. We also have, if you look at individual leather, individual leatherbacks sighted across years, you can also see that decreasing trend pretty dramatically over time, again, despite increasing observer effort. These violin plots show the curved carapace length, so how long are these leatherbacks? The mean is indicated by these red dots here, and the size range for the year is indicated by the top and the bottom of the plot. The robustness around the mean, I like to consider it the round around the midsection, is, is gives you an idea of the distribution around the mean. The takeaway from this plot is that we have a reduction in variability of curved carapace length. We're no longer seeing those larger, older nesting moms over the past seven years that we've seen in the 13 years prior. We also conduct regular flipper tagging as part of the Widecast network, and this has led to 41 confirmed mark recaptures. This is where animals are sighted tagging Dominica, but also nesting in other islands. We're able to understand time between sightings here, as well as distance traveled, with an average distance traveled about 160 kilometers and a max about 534 kilometers. But what's really unique is the time between sightings. The minimum of this range is the same day. We had a leatherback nest early evening in Dominica, and it was, and through the Widecast network, that same leatherback tag was sighted that same evening in Guadalupe. I still can't wrap my head around that, but when an animal travels 140 or so miles a day, the swim from Dominica to Guadalupe is just a leisurely stroll. We also use telemetry for observer-independent data collection that reveals sort of fidelity to certain areas as juveniles seeing in those shallower waters. And you'll see, these are two animals, one tagged in the south near the Scottshead Soufray Marine Reserve, that's that middle photo there, and then one tagged in the north, that was a bycaught green turtle from a fisherman near the Cabrits Marine Park. But what's interesting also, and what we see in other areas, is when these animals get larger, they spend some time in Dominica and then travel elsewhere. So, here you could see an animal to the far, I guess it's on the far right of the screen, you can see the animal that spent 28 days in Dominica, near the Scottshead Soufray Marine Reserve, and then spent the next 271 days lounging in Guadalupe. Over the years, we've, this is a zoomed-out map of all of our telemetry data over the years, over the past 20 years. It incorporates about 4,531 days of tag time, with leatherbacks moving the farthest, about 600 miles south of Iceland, before they turn towards the West African coast, before tags start falling off. And also, you can see some juvenile greens heading to South America, to Venezuela and Colombia, by those purple dots in the south there. Over the years, we've tracked 12 leatherbacks, six greens, and 11 hawksbills since about 2010, all summed up here. So, as I mentioned before about the fourth pillar here, I really wanted to just mention about where do we go from here? You know, the biggest challenge, and one that I saw my good friend Errol Harris, who's since passed away, do, is how to keep an organization, a grassroots organization like us, in business in Dominica. How do you, how do you get funding for long-term monitoring efforts? People like to fund new sexy things, but that long-term sustainability is really tough. And so, the biggest challenge is how do you ensure we have organizational survival? And so, we want to ensure that the people that are affected by these communities near nesting beaches and near our reefs have truly sustainable jobs and alternative sources of livelihood, and that's where our conservation distillery comes in. If you look at the top four businesses over time that have survived pandemics, war, natural disasters, they fall into four categories. Banks, we had no money, so we weren't starting a bank. Breweries, wineries, and distilleries. And we only had to look at our neighbors in Guadalupe and Martinique to see distilleries that are hundreds of years old. So we took a chapter of these and have started our own distillery. And so, our hope is that our, a premium rum will support our conservation work for the long term, we'll have to continue finding grants until that takes over, as well as continue improving our monitoring efforts and serving as a deterrent to protect those last few remaining turtles that exist in Dominica. And we continue to work on active investigations and enforcement of illegal hunting in collaboration with the Dominica Police. So lastly, I just want to acknowledge, this has been a monumental effort that you really can only scratch the surface on in a short presentation, and this has spanned multiple communities across generations of people at this point now. So I really have to take a minute to thank our patrol teams, I'm just lucky enough to be the talking head. These guys spend nights in the rain and wind on the beach, often in harm's way, we've had guys hit over the head with the butts of cutlasses and all sorts of other things for people that want to do harm to sea turtles. These guys are out there and really doing the hard work. The government of Dominica has been remarkable, especially the forestry and fisheries divisions, who've been amazingly supportive collaborators. But I did sneak in this photo without Marcella's approval, because she's way too modest to accept accolades for what she's done for the past 20 years. But I especially wanted to thank Errol and Marcella Harris. Errol, whom nearly everyone referred to as Uncle Errol, regardless if they were related or not, sadly passed away before he could see this amazing dataset and all the amazing insights that we're able to start to glean from this. And so, it's thanks to his dedication that we're able, really able to get an idea of the status of sea turtles in Dominica. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jake. Congratulations for getting everybody back to concentration and attention. And I love the idea that you're going to have a motto saying, "Save a turtle, drink some rum." That's something that can get us somewhere, for sure.
There's a bottle here for the student auction, too, by the way.
Well, there you go. Thank you very much, Jake. Our next presenter is Jamie Aquino, working in Haiti, and she will talk about her experience working that very special place. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you. Good morning, how are you? So, today I'm going to talk about what we do in Haiti that focuses on the role of experiential learning on Haitian fishing communities' motivation to protect marine megafauna in Haiti's Baradaris Kaiyameet Marine Protected Area. So let me begin, I know some of you in this room, a lot of you in this room, but not all of you. Let me tell you about Haiti Ocean Project. We are an NGO based in southern Haiti. Since 2007, we work with the local communities to find sustainable solutions to protect their endangered marine megafauna through education, conservation, and research, and ultimately, we help the local populations in addition to the species. Our focus is megafauna, primarily the marine mammals, sea turtles, sharks, and stingrays. Just a quick backstory, how did me, an American teacher, come to Haiti? In 2007, I was a high school English and journalism teacher in South Florida, had a number of Haitian-American students in my classroom, and through their inspiration and motivation and my interest in their country, we started something to educate the youth of Haiti about the marine mammals. That was how it began, but it went in a whole different direction, a good direction. So, I wanted to focus on one part of Haiti. We pretty much are working in a large part of the country, primarily the entire southern peninsula, but today I want to focus on the Baradaris Kaiyameet Marine Protected Area. One, because I know NPAs are the big discussion, we're always talking about the NPAs, how we can work to better manage them. In Haiti, there are NPAs. I can say that they all have a lot of issues, especially with the megafauna, there's no enforcement, there's really no government involvement. It's really up to us, the local NGOs, to do anything to make a change in the NPA. So, I wanted to focus on this one, which we are a co-manager of with the Haitian government, so it's important to us, and it's very close to the community where we're based, which is Petit Revers, Denis. So let me tell you a little bit about this NPA. It was officially established in 2017, it was declared an NPA by a former president, who is no longer here, Jovenel Moïse, he was assassinated, you might have known that story, but he did declare this NPA before that happened, so we're glad that it was officially declared an NPA. It's very large, it has 87,621 hectares, there's over at least 100,000 fishers, families and others locals residing in this area. Fishing is the main source of income, agriculture and trade secondary, it's very diverse. It's got two bays, it's got multiple different marine ecosystems, supporting a lot of marine life, including megafauna. And as I said, we're a co-manager with the Haitian government. So this is the official document that was created by the government, which shows the boundaries of it, and you can see it's pretty, it's pretty diverse. It goes over two different departments in the country, and there are 12 coastal fishing communities that we work in. And this is a Google Earth image where you can see, there's a couple of islands, there's a large peninsula, there's the two bays, it's got a lot going on. So let's talk about the problem. The problem is that all marine megafauna are a potential food source in Haiti, including the marine megafauna in this NPA. These species are caught and killed by fishers, youth, the entire community, near shore, at sea, along the coast, everywhere. Why is this happening? This is just a few of the reasons in Haiti. Poverty, desperation, lack of education, limited resources, unemployment, and opportunity. Additionally, some of these marine megafaunas, such as the large whale sharks and the Atlantic devil rays, which are quite large compared to these little fisher canoes, they're also killed out of fear, they just don't understand them, so they kill them. So I'm going to show you several images, and they're not pleasant because they're all animals that have been caught and killed. These are some of the diverse species that we find in this NPA. Spotted eagle ray, hawksbill sea turtle, blunt-nosed six-gill shark, green sea turtle, short-finned pilot whale, juvenile oceanic whitetip shark, Atlantic devil ray, yellow stingray, scalloped hammerhead, and the list goes on. So how do they catch these animals? Multiple fishing methods, the most common are the gill nets, and then the seine nets. They also catch them with traps, hand-lined fishing, and with spears. So what's the solution? As an educator, I came in focused on education, and some people said, "Oh, education can't solve the problem," but it can, if it's done properly. We focus on a type of learning called experiential learning, which we use through our education, conservation, and research. If you're not familiar with that term, it's also called hands-on learning, direct learning, learning from experience, learning by doing, active learning, and there are schools that are called monastery schools, where the kids get hands-on learning, it's also the same type of thing. You teach them, and they go out and do it, and it works. So let's talk about some of the things that we do. We do start with that classroom learning, in the classroom, concrete walls behind you, maybe you're outdoors, but you're just sitting and talking, dialogue, conversation, something I brought, not as many as the Bahamas, but I do have a few, and I can get more if you're interested. This is called the Haiti Marine Species Guide. We produced it, we made it, and what it shows is all of the marine megafauna that potentially could be found in Haiti's waters. And through this, our fishers have been really interested in this, and it's helped us, with their help, to identify what's in the waters. A lot of the fishers are illiterate, they can't read and write, but they can look at a picture and say, "Wow, I've seen that before." And it also helps them identify different species, because originally, a dolphin was a dolphin, was a dolphin, didn't matter what color it was, how big it was, they just saw a dolphin, now they are starting to learn the different species of dolphins, so this has been really helpful. Okay, so let's talk about the solution, what do we do with this experiential learning? We teach them in the classroom, we get them out in the field to do the work. Many fishers catch turtles, a lot of them juveniles, juvenile hawksbill, juvenile green. So we get the fishers involved, they catch the turtles, and they normally kill the turtles. In this case, they're not just catching them and killing them anymore, they're catching them and they're bringing them to us. We assess them, we tag them, it's a whole process, but for now, they're seeing the turtles from a different perspective, it's not just food on the dinner plate, it's a living, breathing animal, and they're starting to form a connection with them. So, these are some of the fishers that have been involved and are involved with our work. We also have a shark catch-and-release program, I mentioned juvenile oceanic whitetip sharks, do have a number of them in our waters. We get the fishers involved in all of our work. They learn how to take a fin clip, they learn how to remove the hook, they learn how to measure, they learn how to release the shark, so they're hands-on connected to these sharks. Again, they're no longer just food, they're a living, breathing animal, and they're learning the value of them in the ecosystem. No sharks is not a good thing. We also have a marine mammal identification program, it's a monitoring network, we're providing smartphones to fishers, not iPhone 15s, but maybe an iPhone 6 or a 7, something a little more economical for us, but they go out and they document the species in our water, do have a lot of marine mammal species, and these fishers see them all the time. Do have a lot of marine mammal species, and these fishers see them all the time. And basically, they'll just swim by and say, "Oh, I saw a sperm whale. Okay, great. Let's take some pictures." And we're starting to form a database. And some of you that are here today, I've been talking with you about how we can keep continuing this work and turning it into more of a research component. We also do a lot with the youth. Again, I was a former high school teacher, so the kids are the future environmental ambassadors and the future generations. We do everything with them. We teach them how to conduct necropsies. We take them out to learn about the ecosystem. They go under the water to explore what's under the water. They're measuring turtles. They're tagging turtles. They're helping release sharks. They're looking for whales and dolphins. They're just involved with everything, and they all love it. They don't want it to stop. And the big thing that we do is this community involvement. It's not just the kids and the fishers. It's the whole community. Here are some examples of whale sharks that we've worked with trying to release. Recently, there was one, not in this NPA, but in another part of Haiti, where the fishers and a member of government, without our physical presence, but through our involvement, working with them, released a whale shark by themselves, and it swam away to freedom. And that was a big deal. They took it out of the net. They released it. So this shows the involvement of the community. And I know Rita was talking about manatees, so we'll get the manatees in there. Unfortunately, manatees that come to Haiti don't... So far, with our involvement, haven't survived. We either find out after they're killed, or in this case, this was a juvenile female manatee that was caught a few years ago in the NPA. We found out about it. We thought it was dead. When our fisher went to go see it, he told us it was alive, brought it back to our village, and the community got involved in trying to save it. And I... Oops, sorry about that. I don't know how to play the video. Does anybody know technology? Sorry, Fadia. Ah, there we go. So this is just an example of the community coming together to try to save this manatee. We had no resources. We didn't have a proper stretcher, so they put this manatee on two wooden planks and brought it to shore. We tried to save it. You'll see it has numerous machete cuts in it. She was in really bad shape, and unfortunately, through that evening, she passed away. But not without the community building an interest in trying to save her. On the right-hand side, you'll see a picture with a billboard. We created a billboard in the village where this manatee was caught, and now we're creating awareness about the species. So yeah, it's just an example of them trying to save it. It's a really sad story. To this day, we still talk about this little manatee. Okay, so let's talk about all the work that we do. What are the results? So some big things came out of this, from this NPA. First thing is, in Haiti, since 2007, we've confirmed 45 megafauna species in the water. In this one NPA, almost half of them, 22 species confirmed in this NPA. Two confirmed, two unconfirmed. You can see a number of sharks, including the oceanic whitetip, scalloped hammerhead, some rays, manatee, sperm whale, two beaked whales, dwarf sperm whale, three sea turtles, and not confirmed visually, but we're working on identifying small-toothed sawfish and lemon sharks. So this is another great thing that happened. Jeffrey and Jerome were at this workshop, so thank you for your contributions with this. The IUCN Marine Mammal Protected Areas Task Force Independent Review Panel designated the Gulf of Ghannab, which is that whole big area in Haiti, to include the NPA, because that was a part of it, designated this area as an area of interest, stating that the potential this area might have towards enhancing the local conservation status of marine mammals in the region, which is a big deal for us, to have that recognition. We also put a satellite tag on the first turtle in Haiti history. This was a female hawksbill, nesting hawksbill, that was caught in the NPA. And the picture down there of that young man is Franklin Barbier. He is here at the conference, but he's in the hotel room right now. He's not feeling great, so we want him to get better. But he's also a fellow at the New England Aquarium, so that's exciting for him. And he was involved with releasing this turtle. We got ultrasound to confirm the eggs. Charlene Kalik stays here in this room somewhere. He's our... He does everything, program coordinator, technology coordinator, but he took the ultrasound to confirm the eggs, and we released her. Unfortunately, three days later, she was caught by a freediver, and they killed at the marketplace. So again, these are the things we deal with in Haiti, but we're working on making a difference. Also, too, through our confirmation of the juvenile oceanic whitetip, which is abundant in our waters, including in this NPA, it is now a confirmed nursery for oceanic whitetips, which is a really big deal. So that's very exciting. And we also put a satellite tag on the first juvenile oceanic whitetip, I think, ever, and also the first for Haiti, so it was a big deal to do that as well. So just a few things I want to say at the end. One is, I've had this question asked multiple times, "How do you do what you do with these people, especially the fishers?" We build relationships. We build friendships. We build partnerships. We find out, "What do you need individually? What do you need as a community? How can we help your family?" These are the things that we do to build those relationships, and those relationships go a long way. You don't necessarily just have to give somebody something tangible to get something in return. Sometimes it's behavior change and just, you know, having people know that you care about them and want to help them, and not just the animals. When I first came to Haiti, I was so focused on the marine mammals. Five minutes later, I met some kids, and I thought, "I can't just help these animals. I have to help these people, too." So this is what we do. We help the animals, and we help the people. I wanted to, again, acknowledge another member of my team, who is out on a fisher field trip, Richard Boyer. He won the Gliding Memorial Award with GCFI, so I'm happy for him. He's great and really contributing. My mom's here. She's my biggest supporter. And her friend Hazel even came, because my mom talks about GCFI so much. She's recruiting her friends to come and support us, so... The other last thing I wanted to say is, as far as our future goals and objectives, it's develop a management plan in this NPA, bottoms-up approach, working with the local communities, developing a plan individually with these communities, and building a bigger one together with the government. We just recently bought some land to build a conservation center, to bring people from this NPA and other areas, to train them, to educate them, to, you know, build relationships stronger through a physical building and space that we can work together on, increase the monitoring network, more phones for the fishers. And just a few quick sponsors, because we've had a lot of support over the years, but Spa Rack, they're here, New England Aquarium, Digicel Foundation, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, the German government, NOAA, Nature Conservancy, just to name a few. And thank you. And this success wouldn't be possible without my team, my family, and all the people in the community who dedicate their time and effort to help protect Haiti's marine megafauna. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jamie. We'll switch to our next presentation. So our next presenter is actually a duo presenter... Oh, presenters, sorry. It's the iconic duo of marine mammal research in the Bahamas. Please, Diane Claridge and Charlotte Dunn. So I guess Diane, you'll start first, and Charlotte will jump right after.
Yeah, hi. Good morning. We're very special. We get to split our time. But we're shifting gears dramatically here, and I just want to point out that I got the wrong date. I think it was yesterday. I thought today was yesterday, and I wish it was yesterday, and we could reset the clock and still have hope for, you know, a better world. But here we are. We will... What did we say last night? We will endure, and we will persist. So yeah, we're switching gears quite significantly here, but I'm still talking about impacts to megafauna. I'm going to be presenting work that we did assessing abundance of Blainville's beaked whales on a U.S. Navy testing range that's in the Bahamas, and show how that highlights the need for effective mitigation. So I'm sure most of you here know that beaked whales have stranded, these atypical stranding events that occur coincident with Navy sonar exercises. So for animals, beaked whales specifically, that live in areas where those exercises occur regularly, you know, that sort of highlights a need to understand more about them, and how do they respond when these exercises are occurring on a regular basis? One of those places is in the Bahamas. The U.S. Navy has the Atlantic Undersea Test and Evaluation Center, or ATEC. It's shown in these maps as that black polygon that's labeled ATEC. Hopefully, you can see it there. Within that area, the U.S. Navy carries out frequent fleet readiness training exercises that includes the use of mid-frequency active sonars. And those sonars have caused strandings of beaked whales. But in this area, because they've gotten used to it, they no longer respond by stranding. What they do is leave the area during these exercises, and then they return afterwards. And we know this from doing both passive acoustic and satellite telemetry studies, work we've done with lots of colleagues. And so I present some of that, the satellite telemetry data here. We've tagged seven Blainville's beaked whales before Navy exercises on the Navy range, and this is showing the tracks from three of those whales. So just to talk you through it a bit, again, the ATEC range there, the black polygon, that's where the area would be ensonified with sonar. The tracks of the whales, the blue is before the exercise takes place. So the middle map shows a good example of how that animal was using the range before the exercise. The red is during the exercise, so it moved out of the area to the south. And then the yellow is where the whales are after the exercise. And the middle one didn't return to the range afterwards, but that's because the satellite tags stopped transmitting. But the others all returned there afterwards. And so, you know, they're being displaced and returning back to their preferred habitat. We know from the satellite tags that this also results in decreased foraging time. And for beaked whales, this is a real concern, because they have a high energetic demand. They're relatively small cetacean, medium-sized to small cetacean. That's foraging at incredible depths, like 1,500 meters. But there's a cost to that. They require a long recovery time, so they can only dive so many times a day. And if they are losing dives because of this disturbance, then it can lead to some health concerns, particularly for reproductive females that are already, you know, stressed. And eventually, could cause declined survival and lead to population-level consequences of these disturbances. So we're assessing these longer-term population-level effects by estimating abundance of Blainville's beaked whales on the Navy range. We used a capture, mark, recapture, or capture, recapture methods. Blainville's beaked whales are really great candidates for this approach, because thanks to the cookie cutter shark, they have these great marks on them. And the example here is of adult female. You know, she's got nicks in her fin. She's recognizable. But those cookie cutter shark bites, we would be able to match that individual 20 years later, even if it's lost its fin entirely due to some other traumatic event. Of course, not all animals are marked, so we have to adjust our estimates to account for the unmarked animals as well. This study took place over a long period of time. They are beaked whales. Their sample sizes are always small. But what's shown here in the graph is the photo identification data. And what I want you to take from this is that there are just under half of the numbers of animals that were photo identified. These are the marked animals. Were seen in more than one year, so some evidence of site fidelity to the area. But, you know, a little more than half were only seen in one year. So we know that animals are moving in and out of the area, so we use an open population model, an Bayesian approach to model fitting to help us convey the uncertainties. We found a small population. Our abundance estimate is only 35 animals using the area annually. Whether or not this is a normal carrying capacity for this area, we don't know, or whether this represents a decline in abundance due to the frequent disturbances. There is some evidence from other areas to support the latter. Charlotte's going to talk about work that we're doing to investigate the reproductive success or impacts of disturbance on reproductive success. But certainly, we know that there's a small, vulnerable population, so it highlights the need for effective mitigation, and equally importantly is the monitoring over the long term to ensure that the mitigation is actually working. Thank you.
She took a little bit of your time, but you have some time left. You guys deal with that between each other.
Okay, so I'm going to talk about how we assessed some of the population-level effects from the sonar. And what we did was looked at the reproductive success of adult females and measured some of their health metrics. And we did that using area photogrammetry. So the goals were to document and monitor pregnancies of adult females and their reproductive success, and also to quantify the cost of reproduction. And that hasn't been done for this species, but it's really important if you consider that they're constantly being disturbed. So this cost of reproduction could actually help us determine also the cost of disturbance. So the polygon in red at the bottom is where DICE maps were showing at the Navy base. All the dots on this map are beaked whale sightings. And in the box north of that is where we are based, and all those are sightings as well. So what we have serendipitously here is two separate populations of the same species. So we're able to work with a undisturbed population and look at what we would determine normal metrics and compare those to the disturbed population at the Navy base. So we use a custom-made drone, because we have federal funding, so we're not allowed any Chinese parts in our drone. I would recommend, if you don't have federal funding, getting a much smaller drone that's easier. Oops. We... It has a high-quality camera, a gimbal, a laser altimeter, so the camera lens is always flat to the sea. We fly at about 30 meters above the whale. Now, I really recommend this method, but you need a lot of patience. You can't have any wind. You can't have any glare. So for us, we can't fly in the middle of the day, any ripples, swell. But if you have those perfect conditions, you can get a photo like the one on the right. So then, we're using software from Oregon State University. They have a drone lab. But you still need to manually put your measurements in. So you mark the tip of the rostrum to the notch in the fluke, giving the total length. And then the software produces these lines at 5% increments. And using those measurements, the width-to-total-length ratio, we can determine if an animal's pregnant. You then also, using these red dots, mark the outline of the whale, and that's giving you the body size, the body area of the whale, and that can be a way of measuring health. So what we were able to do, we flew over eight individual adult females, and again, with beaked whales, that's a huge sample size. So the top line represents three, in blue, whales that we were predicted to be pregnant. They had a significantly larger width-to-total-length ratio. And the red line represents five adult females. And on the left, you can visually see the same animal on the top when she was pregnant, and below, lactating. How her condition deteriorated, it changed. Her girth is much narrower at the bottom. We were then able to see the three whales we had predicted to be pregnant later, all with calves. So this is really important, because where we work, whenever it's calm, we go on the water, but we're not always allowed at the Navy base, so we can't always do the follow-up to see, "Did they have a calf?" But if we can get flights and know they look pregnant, and then we're back there a year later and they're without a calf, we know they've lost that calf. Preliminary results for the BAI showed that as the calf age increases, the body area of the mother decreases. So this is the cost of reproduction. If an animal that is losing its fitness due to lactation is then repeatedly disturbed, at some point, she will abandon her calf. So this is a really important new metric that looks promising to help to measure some of this disturbance. And in the future, we will continue to get some of these metrics, looking at growth rates and state-specific sizes, and compare them between the disturbed and undisturbed populations. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Diane and Charlotte, for these twin presentations. Our next presentation... Our next presentation is a recorded presentation. It's from Anne-Hélène Garrig about how to use diatoms as markers for sea turtles in Martinique. We'll just watch her presentation.
This communication is about the use of diatoms as markers of sea turtle movements in Martinique. Initial results, prospects, and potential. A better understanding of the movements of sea turtles, thanks to the microflora that develops on their shells, will help us gain a better understanding of their migratory routes. This is an essential part of the challenge, to be able to implement global management measures that will allow these species to be protected on a large scale. Turtle commensal diatoms are often benthic diatoms that originate from the environment frequented by turtles, with little exchange between turtles. This non-invasive, animal-friendly approach is therefore highly relevant and potentially rich in information on turtle ecology and movements. Using bioregionalism, diversity and ecology of diatom assemblages, taxonomic approach using microscopy and molecular analysis. Diatoms represent 25% of the world living biomass, generate a quarter of the oxygen on the planet, and be responsible for 50% of global ocean primary production. They live in all ecosystems and can survive in extreme environments. There are several different forms of life divided into two major groups: solitary cells and colonial forms, and two main types: planktonic and benthic. The benthic diatoms are classified in five types depending on the substrate they are living on. There are different uses of diatoms potential. Diatoms lives on many animals, including sea turtles. Here are some photos of the all community in the scanning electron microscope. Benthic diatoms are living inside a matrix called biofilm. These biofilms are home to a wide variety of microorganisms and function like a microscopic forest in constant contact with its environment. This is a schematic representation of biofilm composition. In our case, studying the turtle biofilm, there are two different great approaches. One is to observe and identify diatoms, and the other one is to use the adsorption capacity of the exopelimer matrix. For the remainder of this presentation, we will focus on the taxonomic composition of the diatom communities studied with light microscopy. The sampling protocols on nesting turtles. Biofilm is collected using one toothbrush. The toothbrush is rinsed and sampling vials pre-filled with ethanol. The operation is reproduced in several places on the shell using standardized diatom sampling protocol for nesting sea turtles of Pinu and Dao. Each turtle has a referencing number. The samples are kept in a cold and dark place. One part of the sample is used to prepare permanent slides, and the other part is stored for possibility of DNA analysis. The slides are examined under the light microscope. Diatom inventories are made and the communities are analyzed. This is the general localization of the study area, with one focus on the French West Indies and Martinique Island. Maydiana Beach is near Fort de France in the central zone on the Caribbean seaside. Diamond Beach is located in the south and on the Caribbean seaside. Salines Beach is located on the South Atlantic seaside. We have 12 samples from the Salines Beach, 22 from the Diamond Beach, and only four from Maydiana Beach. So we have 38 samples in all, one single species, the hawksbill turtle. So far, we realized complete light microscope observations on 10 samples. 137 genera. And 1,450 taxa have been observed and photographed to make identification plates. Only 362 taxa can be identified for sure and 11 uncertainly. So, we realized the diatom floristic atlas of turtles. The unidentified taxa are numbered and well illustrated to allow us to count and always give the same name to diatom species. We compared our first results with the bibliographic data of the major studies on diatom attached on turtle shell. We found studies on olive-ribbly, green, and loggerhead turtles. But there is no study of attached diatom on hawksbill turtles. We can see that the diatom community associated with hawksbill turtles is more diverse than that associated with other turtle species. We found two studies on the diatom community associated with hawksbill turtles, but they only use scanning electronic microscopy method. It's impossible to count with this method, so the results are very partial results on biodiversity and only on few species. So, it's not possible to compare these results with our own results. Developing standardized counting methods and then having a consistent and reproducible dataset for statistical analysis is one of the problems. So, we chose four turtles and we counted on three slides for the same turtle. Each study used different counting methods. It is therefore necessary to carry out an exploratory analysis in order to determine the number of taxonomic units required for the assessment of diatom biodiversity. To analyze all turtle species in all geographical areas using a single counting method for future studies. 500 taxonomic units were counted for each slide, and we obtained an accumulation curve of the number of genera and species as a function of the number of taxonomic units counted. We can see that for each count, the diversity is less in Salines Beach than in Diamond Beach, and the most is observed in Maydiana Beach. Here is the theoretical accumulation curve for all environmental studies. And we see that the genera and species richness of our samples are still in the linear phase. More research is needed on other turtles to decide how many taxonomic units are needed to better understand the biodiversity of the diatom communities attached to the shells of hawksbill turtles. This is an illustration of the morphological diversity of diatoms by an artist, Claus Kemp. Diatoms are classified into major morphological groups. The proportions of these different groups within the diatom communities give us the macro-scale community structure. This is an illustration of the macro-scale community for the four turtles selected for the three-slide count. There is no significant structural difference between the three counts from the same turtle. But there are structural differences between the four turtles. So even though we don't know the true diversity of the community, as we see before, using the one-slide-10 inventories for more in-depth and comparative analysis is validated. For each turtle, we carried out the single-slide count on 500 taxonomic units in a complete observation of the three slides. Here is the global result of the number of genera and species within the major morphological groups. Some rare groups, such as unitioid and surirroid, only appear with the complete observation of the three slides. The main groups are the aerophid, the symmetric birophid and the centric for genera, and the symmetric birophid for species. A comparative analysis between turtles and beaches is shown in this graphic. Samples taken in July are circled in red and those taken in August are circled in green. Some turtles show the same macro-scale communities. However, it's not possible to correlate them with the beach or the date of sampling. This graph shows the correlation between turtles, x-axis, and the relative abundance of all genera, list of all genera on the y-axis. Size of each square is proportional to relative abundance of genera. Certain genera are much more abundant and are going to have a greater impact on structuring the diatom community. Using a hierarchical classification based on the genera whose relative abundance is greater than 10%, we can identify four groups of turtles. We indicated the beach and sampling month on the graph. Better discrimination is obtained with genera whose relative abundance is greater than 30%. A factorial correspondence analysis was carried out to provide a clearer picture of the role of the different genera in structuring communities. We see that some genera contribute more than others. We have therefore retained only the most contributory genera in a new analysis. The major genera: Hyallosira, Placasa, Miocinadra, Mitschia, Analis, Cocognis. The F1 axis shows a strong opposition between turtle 6 and the other turtles. The F2 axis shows a strong opposition between turtle 37 and the other turtles. The turtle 6 and 37 are characterized by very different genera. This graph shows the correlation between turtles, x-axis, and the relative abundance of species, all species on the y-axis. Size of each square is proportional to relative abundance of species. Certain species are much more abundant and are going to have a greater impact on structuring the diatom community. Using a hierarchical classification...
Sorry. That presentation was much longer than it was supposed to be. So it will be available on the app as well if you want to finish watching this. But time is running out. And if we want to finish on time, we need to move on. So I'll now ask the last presenter of the morning to come join us, Louise Simon, that is going to talk about sperm whales in the Lassenties before a short break.
So, hi, everyone. I'm Louise Simon. I'm working at the Caribbean Cetacean Society. And today, together, we will try to answer this question. So, does culture specialize the sperm whale distribution across the Caribbean? Yes, so sperm whales have a really complex social organization, comprising mature females, juveniles, and calves. And several families can live together as a social unit. And sometimes to hunt more efficiently or to escape predators, those families join together to form larger groups. As for example, here are the group one. But all the individuals of the same groups are necessarily belonging to the same vocal clan. So that can be comparable to our definition of a language. So sperm whales uses echolocation by producing clicks to locate themselves, to locate their prey or also their conspecific. And the duration, the intensity, but also the rhythm of those clicks depends on the context. So for example, when they are interacting with conspecific, they will produce codas, which is 3 to 20 clicks lasting between 0.2 to 2 seconds. And it's this coda that going to define an individual membership of a vocal clan. So here in the Lassentie, we have three already-known vocal clans that have been described by Gero, Whitehead, and Vachon. Each of these clans has its own specific coda. So for the EC1 is the 1 plus 1 plus 3 coda. For the EC2, it's 5 regular clicks. And for the EC3, it's 9 regular clicks. And now, we're gonna discover it together. So EC1, EC2, and EC3. Okay, so the three vocal clans form the overall population in the Lassentie. And this population has been estimated to 536 individuals, thanks to the work of several organizations from 1984 to 2018. But because most of those studies were focused around Guadeloupe and Dominica, this population estimate might have been biased. So that's why Felicia wanted to expand the study area. From 2019 to 2020, she expanded the study area from Saint-Kyton-Nevis to Grenada. And it has allowed her to discover 145 more individuals. And so with the same aim and similar protocols, SSS expanded also the study area to include all the islands from Anguilla to Grenada, with also the ABC island and even now more, a bit of the Greater Antilles with Dominican Republic. And this has allowed us to discover 40, 54 new individuals. So among those new individuals, some of them are presented here. So 19 of those new individuals are possible new members of 10 already-known social units. For example, the individual 57 is a new member of the social unit grouping 7 that has been discovered by Felice Vachon. And but also some of them form eight possible new social units, so as the two that are presented here and that have been seen in Bonner and in Guadeloupe. So most of those new individuals belong to the three already-known vocal clans. And to understand how those vocal clans were distributed along the arc, Vachon and SSS mapped their distribution using Carnell-Don City Model with data from 2019 to 2022. And the results are quite similar. So it is showing that vocal clans have distinctive areas. So even if the EC1 clan is present all along the arc, it's mostly concentrated along the island of Guadeloupe and Dominica, while EC2 and EC3 are for the south. So around Martinique and Saint-Lucia for EC2 and around Grenada for EC3. And also, those vocal clans have never been seen together at the same places at the same moment. So all those evidences suggest that the vocal clans exhibits a certain territorial residency over restricted distribution area. As for their movements, even if the scope and destination of trips vary from clan to clan, the maximum distance is always, does not exceed 300 kilometers and for a mean duration of four years. So those small-scale movements paired with restricted areas seems to indicate that the population of sperm whale in the Lassentie has a sedentary lifestyle and form resident population that never if ever leave the arc. So that's what we thought before, had knew that as from 2023 to 2024. So because we've surveyed new areas as the ABC, we've discovered that the EC1 was also present between the island of Curazao and Bonner. And the EC2 was present in Dominican Republic. So it seems that those restricted area are not that restricted and have a wider distribution area. As for the movement, so we also recited two of the individuals of the social unit I, which is belonging to the EC2 vocal clan. It was last seen in Dominica in 2017, and it has been recited in 2024 over 1,200 kilometers away. So this seems to indicate that the sperm whale population might have a more seminomadic lifestyle rather than sedentary lifestyle. So we also discovered a new type of coda that we've never heard before, that we called the plus-two coda because it's made of a certain amount of rapid clicks followed by two slower clicks and that we can hear now. But because the individuals that we've seen at the same time that we heard this coda were not known individuals, it's difficult to say if it's really a new vocal clan or maybe it's a non-identity coda. So to conclude, answering our question, does culture specialize the sperm whale distribution across the Caribbean? It's a bit challenging because in one end, It's a bit challenging because in one hand, if we take into account all the data up to 2023, and also the strong territoriality within the clans, we can say that, yes, culture partially shaped the sperm whale distribution, but on another hand, we also seem that those territories are overlapping and have a wider distribution. So what we know is that more than ever, we need more effective ocean management. So because we know that the sperm whales are traveling a lot between the islands, we need greater cooperation, and also because we've seen that Haddie knew that has also challenged our previous assumption, we need to keep completing the lack of knowledge with the ongoing research and expedition. And so we need harmonized regulation for each vocal clan, for each island between all the islands of the Caribbean, and that was already suggested by Gérault in 2017. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you very much, Louise. We will take a short break before the panel discussion so that we can organize things over here, so you can have a short bathroom break. And before we do that, we'd like to take a group picture. Stacy, do you want to take the whole room? Should people stay seated or stand up or... So everybody come down here before going to the bathroom, and we'll get back at 12:20. Be back in the room at 12:20, please.